And once again, I'd like to call the August 18, 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please join Commissioner Turley Trejo as she leads us in the flag salute.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a pleasant opportunity to recognize a couple of new commissioners tonight. The city clerk will now conduct the oath of office ceremony for our new planning commissioners.
Thank you Vice Chair Telleseio. So I will have Commissioner Ruiz and Commissioner Hegel come and join me at the podium. And if you'll go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I am Adam Hegel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations Commissioner Ruiz and congratulations Commissioner Hegel.
We have a roll call please.
Yes Commissioner Turley Trejo?
Here.
Commissioner Watts?
Here.
Vice Chair Telleseio?
Here.
Commissioner Hegel?
Here.
And Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
All commissioners are present.
Do we have any public comments or requests to speak for items not on the agenda?
I have received no requests.
Thank you. We'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. Agenda item number one is recommendation for the approval of the action minutes of July 7, 2021. Do we have a motion and a second?
I submit.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All opposed?
Well can we do all in favor and we would probably have the two new commissioners abstain from the vote?
What she said.
Aye.
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 Abstain?
And abstain.
Sticking to the script. And item number four, the selection of the chairperson and vice chairman.
We're on item number two.
Oh Luke, we gotta get him in the picture.
Are you ready?
Yes, you're ready.
Okay. So just briefly, I just wanted to kind of insert myself to welcome our newest members to the Planning Commission. It feels very good to be up here with a full team and for many reasons, but we have a very important and detailed agenda for the Planning Commission coming up over the next, well, right away, but also over the next few years with the general plan update, the housing element, quality life master plan, parking issues in Old Town. There's a lot of stuff going on, so I'm very happy to have a full team up here. I think the competition was stiff. I was actually very encouraged and pleased by the number and quality of the candidates. And I thought there was a lot of good candidates in there, but I have to say that I think the council made a very good decision and I think the staff is very happy with the decision. And very much looking forward to working with both you and the rest of the existing council, excuse me, commission, over the next, over the rest of your terms. So congratulations, welcome. The staff, which not all here today, but don't hesitate to call us, don't hesitate to come on in. We actually enjoy those conversations and interactions, so make sure that, you know, you understand that we have an open door policy and we're here for you. So again, congratulations and looking forward to it.
Introductions by Luke.
It's a, what are we on here? Number three, conduct self-introductions of new commissioners, so I think you can choose. Maybe Bob, you want to go first?
So I'm Bob Hegel. I've been a traffic, Public Traffic Safety Commissioner for 15 years and have just recently retired. We sold our business, my wife and I, she's out in the audience there. We sold our business after almost 18 years. It was in Marietta. We own the building it's in, we've sold the building, we're waiting to close. It's been a long closure period. Prior to being a local entrepreneur here, I was in the corporate relocation business for 28 years and worked with major corporations throughout the United States on helping them move their employees as well as advising them on moving facilities, including corporate headquarters. Did a number of big projects here in California and actually worked with the federal government on some top secret stuff, which was kind of interesting. And I had a real estate license at one point, appraiser's license. We were very involved in a lot of real estate during that time. And that's pretty much it.
Why did you say why you decided to apply?
Well, I decided to apply when I was surprised that two people were leaving at once and keeping up to date on what was going on in the city, I knew there was some pretty big things coming up, so I felt that it was important to have some experience here. And I'm glad that Adam could join us as well, so I think we're, I think we've got some good experience here. I know I've got a good learning curve ahead of me and I appreciate all the advice and knowledge from you guys and from the staff as well, but I think we're, I think we're in as good a shape as we could be in, so.
And my name is Adam Ruiz, coming off of the Community Services Commission. I was appointed there in 2019. Lived in Temecula for almost 25 years now. Actually went to high school here, left when Temecula was pretty much nothing. Didn't think I'd be back and fortunes have it, I did come back in 2000. Met my wife, I got my family out here, my wife Yvonne, been married for 19 years. My son Alejandro just graduated from Chaparral High School and he's waiting orders for the Air Force, which he'll be entering soon. And then my daughter Yessenya is a junior also at Chaparral High School. I started a business here in 2005. Currently, my profession is a mortgage broker, real estate broker, but also Government Affairs Director for our local Association of Realtors. So a lot of legislative stuff. Been involved with the community pretty heavy since I started my business, got involved with the Chamber first, started a Rotary Club, which I'm still part of, and that was one of my probably greatest accomplishments for the community is getting that Rotary Club up and running. With my time on the Association of Realtors, I'm a state director, so we travel for the state a few times a year and I'm also one of two national directors representing our area here. And at both levels, I served on, and still serve on, the land use and environmental services. So got a little bit of background there and seeing and hearing what's happening, not only in California but across the country and some of the different challenges that they've got going on and some of the successes that they've got going on. And with that comes a network of how do you guys do this, what have you done over there? And, you know, for me, for me, I've always believed in getting involved. You know, you can't, you can either sit back and wonder or question or complain, or you can actually get involved and keep yourself up to date and I've really immersed myself with that. Really enjoy time on community services, but the big thing that really led me there was I also coached competitive soccer for many years, so kind of being that liaison with the sports and recreation world. But when my son graduated high school, that retired my coaching career, so didn't have the same kind of connection. And when I saw the opportunity open up here for Planning Commission, something I've kind of had my eye on for a while anyway and thought I'd throw my name out there. And like Luke said, that I read the packet of applicants and I was like, wow, there's a lot of good talent, you know? And Temecula is very blessed to have not only that talent out there, but the number of people willing to come out and serve and just very blessed that I was, that I was selected and look forward to working with everybody here, staff included.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. Now we get to agenda item number four. That's the selection of the chairperson and vice chairman of the commission for 2021 calendar year. I had a little talk with Luke today and found that I can do what I want to do at my last waning few seconds in this job. I want to nominate Commissioner Watts for chair for the following coming year, Commissioner Turley Trejo for vice chair, and vote on it that way. Is that wrong? Now I'm talking to the legal end of it.
No, that's fine. If you want to take the vote that way, that's acceptable.
Good. So that's my nomination motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a second, I guess.
He's second.
I'll second.
He got it.
Well, he did?
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Here.
Right now, not next meeting?
No, you start now.
All right. I wasn't ready for this, so.
You aren't gonna be ready for the next council meeting either, but that's yours.
One more thing to add to my day. Okay. So, next up on the.
No, turn it around.
I'm all right. I'm all right.
One, I'm fine.
Yeah, we've received presentation on local redistricting efforts and provide general recommendations regarding public engagement and I believe our city clerk, Randy Joel, is going to be making that presentation.
Yes. So again, congratulations Commissioner Ruiz, Commissioner Hegel, for joining the Planning Commission. Congratulations Chair Watts, Vice Chair Turley Trejo on your upcoming services chair and vice chair. I am here, my name is Randy Joel. I am the Director of Legislative Affairs as well as the city clerk, as well as the project manager and executive director to our new ready commission. And I am here tonight wearing all three, four of those hats and you'll see why as we talk about redistricting. So with redistricting and, there we go. So as you guys may be aware, I'm gonna go ahead and move this just a tad bit over, we have office holder elections for the city in November of even numbered years. Back in 2017, and I will apologize, former Community Services Commissioner Ruiz, I recognize that you have already had this presentation, so if you'll just indulge me, the others have not. In 2017, we went ahead and transitioned the city from at-large elections to district-based elections. And in 2018, we went ahead and transitioned districts one, three, and five to district-based elections. And then here in 2020, we went ahead and transitioned districts two and four. So at this point, all five of our districts are fully transitioned into district-based elections. Now, when we have district-based elections, it is required that we redistrict every 10 years. And basically, we use the new census data that comes out to go ahead and redraw those district lines to basically reflect how our local population in the city of Temecula has changed. The districts are drawn so that each district is roughly equal in population, ensuring that each council member is representing a fairly equal number of constituents. Here in Temecula, in many cities, it is actually the city council, the legislative body, that is responsible for approving local districts. In some of the larger cities, there's independent redistricting commissions, but in most of the general law cities that are our size, it's typically the elected body, city council. We do use a consultant demographer. In fact, we will be having our first public hearing Tuesday night. Then our consultant is National Demographics Corporation. These are the folks that also helped us transition into districting, so we do use them for redistricting as well. Now, the census data, as many of you might have heard, the census data was released earlier this week or last week. That is not the census data that we use in its current form to go ahead and redistrict. What happens is, is that particular district, that particular data has been released in legacy format, that's a type of format that it comes out in, that US Census Bureau district or data is then sent off to the states. So the state of California will receive that information. They will then just go ahead and adjust that data for prison populations. So basically, what happens is they will go ahead and assign the last known residential addresses to those particular prison populations and then we will receive that adjusted data and that is what we will go ahead and use. As you can imagine, there are cities that have state prisons and so on and so forth, so it doesn't make sense to go ahead and allocate that entire population set for those communities. So the last known addresses are made available, data is adjusted, it comes back to the cities to go ahead and redistrict with. We're expecting that data probably within the next few weeks. For Temecula, the redistricting must be completed by April 17, 2022. Now, the criteria that we use to redistrict is very well laid out in both federal and state law. So in the federal law, it's basically that we have to have equal population, and this is again, based on the total population of the adjusted census data. We have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act and we have to make sure that at the federal level, there's no racial gerrymandering. At the state level, things have changed a little bit since we actually redistricted. We had two pieces of key legislation, AB 849 and 1276, that passed over the last two to three years, so. So this data, or this particular criteria is a little bit different than what we used to actually district with initially in 2017. So in California, under the Voting Rights Act, we have to basically make sure that our districts are geographically contiguous, areas that are just meeting at corners or they're not separated here, we don't have that issue in Temecula, you know, by water, not connected by a bridge or tunnel, those things are not considered contiguous. So, I mean, when you think about it from a reasonable standpoint, it's, it makes sense. You don't want districts that are only contiguous based on one little corner that they might be tied to. The geographic integrity of local neighborhoods or communities shall be respected in a manner that minimizes this division. We're gonna talk about communities of interest in just a second. We need to make sure that the boundaries are easily identifiable, so this is our main arterials, you know, recognize landmarks, things like that. We don't want to necessarily break up in unknown neighborhoods with, you know, unknown streets. The lines need to be drawn to encourage geographic compactness, so no squiggly shapes and those kinds of things. We need to make sure that our geographic compactness is respected to the extent possible. And we need to obviously make sure that boundaries aren't drawn in any way to favor or discriminate against any political parties. Our elections are nonpartisan and our redistricting must be as well. So with these new pieces of legislation, one of the things that, some of the things that they are requiring actually is we have to have a minimum of four public hearings. You have to have two public hearings before you adopt the draft maps and draw the draft maps and two public hearings out there in print once the draft maps are out there for comment and public review. We also have to have workshops and that is, so us going out to all of the boards and commissions and any HOAs or communities or whatever, this is a part of this legislation, so there's that legislative affairs piece, but it's also a part of our inclusivity efforts as well. We want to make sure that we are reaching everybody and anybody and we are obligated to go ahead and make sure that we make a good faith effort to those groups that have indicated they have interest in the redistricting process, that we are doing everything we can to reach out to those folks. And we do have some, during the initial districting process, there was interest by the local Latina Association, there was interest by the NAACP, so we have already let them know that we are going through this respective process. We have to make sure that we do, we have a good faith outreach effort to communities that do not speak English, so we know in our community roughly 20 to 25% of our community, English is not their primary language spoken at home, so we will be making sure that we are reaching out to them the best that we can. We have to have a website that is maintained for the entire 10 years between redistricting efforts now, so that's a part of the new legislation as well. We have to have the entire process in our designated languages here in Riverside County and in the city of Temecula. That is only English and Spanish for us. In some other cities, they have a few more languages that they need to provide all of this information in. We have to have specific timelines. Our hearings have to actually start at the designated time that they are noticed. So you will see next Tuesday, the mayor will be calling the meeting to order and we will immediately be having that public hearing. This was legislated to us in, you know, some of these newer laws. And there's a lot of different pieces to draft maps and recordings and how the public has the ability to participate in the process. Public can go ahead and not only provide public comment, but if they want, they could submit draft maps in writing an email to us. That could all be considered in addition to whatever the demographer goes ahead and So again, we are kicking off our efforts and this is, you guys are the second to the last commission that we are making a little stop at. We will be at Public Traffic Safety Commission next week. And one of the things that, we're doing this for multiple reasons, obviously to really bring awareness to the redistricting process. It only happens once every 10 years. It's absolutely vital that everybody in the community gets engaged, gets involved. Obviously, with all of our ready efforts, we want to make sure that we are reaching out to everybody and anybody and including everybody in the process, whether that's board and commissioners, whether that is anybody else out there that is interested in the process. We have special needs communities, we have senior populations, we want to make sure everybody understands what is going on with the redistricting and is contributing. And then we are definitely soliciting feedback to engage in the process and that's what brings me to the recommendations piece of it. So we know that we have certain communities of interest in our community that may be interested in the redistricting process because they may not, you know, want to be in two separate districts. One thing that always comes to mind, that's an easy example to share, is we have a mobile home park in our community. And we want to make sure that to the extent possible, that particular community of interest is not divided into two districts in any way. We know we have communities of interest that overlap with elementary schools or overlap with middle schools or overlap with high schools, to the extent possible. It's not a requirement, because obviously, high schools are huge areas, but like to the extent possible, if there's a particular neighborhood that goes to a, an elementary school that's also in that neighborhood, maybe we want to try to see if we can overlay the school district boundary with that. That is a community of interest. If we know that there are members of the community that are, that, Pujol Street comes to mind, you know, that's a particular community of interest that is residential, that is pretty much along one street. To the extent possible, we would not want to split up Pujol Street in two different districts. So those are some examples of communities of interest. It could include HOAs, it could include sports leagues, it can include all kinds of things. So we are here today to answer your questions and get suggestions from you on any communities of interest that you would like to share with us and also if you have any ideas for us on how to further engage the community on redistricting. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it over to you to facilitate a discussion regarding the same.
Thank you very much and please accept my apologies for not getting your, all your titles. I wouldn't have been able to memorize them anyhow. Thank you very much. It was very educational and vital for our ongoing efforts, so.
Do you have something?
Linay?
Did you have something? Go ahead.
Are you aware of any conflicts between the federal laws and the state laws regarding districting?
I actually am not, because we went through this process in 2017 and we had to use both.
Okay, so there was no changes in the state law that would create a conflict or anything, which is, that's good. Doesn't add another layer of complexity onto it.
It does not.
Yeah. So as I understand it then, the, like the Main Street Bridge would have no impact on this, it's not a, not a major border of any kind. I-15 might. And then you have, there is certain roadways that are considered our major roadways like, you know, Winchester and Temecula Parkway. And I'm pretty sure that all of our neighborhoods are within, you know, within those confines, so that shouldn't create any problem. Is there, is the homeless considered in this?
So.
Like last residents of a homeless person?
Yeah, so it's interesting, remember, districting and redistricting are done based on census data.
Right.
Now, the homeless population is considered one of our harder to count populations.
Right.
So to the extent that they were counted?
Okay.
That, and not, we know not all segments of the homeless population are counted?
Right.
Because they are, they're are mobile, but to the extent they were counted, they are considered.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello.
Good to have you here.
So there is a community that I would like to suggest. I know I, I noticed that now like with the, with what you sent us with the update, that it's all in, all different languages now on the website, right? So one language that I know is missing is American Sign Language. And so I think if there was a way to, because not all deaf people can just read, it just depends on how they've been raised. And so having things in text does not necessarily help them. And so having an interpreter, having somebody who is interpreting what is important or what is being said or with this redistricting would be really important to include that community, so.
Absolutely, so noted.
Mr. Telleseio, any questions? Mr. Ruiz?
Yeah, thanks again Randy. And I know we mentioned when you came to Community Services, you know, the HOAs and seeing some of those and there, just two things. We did mention possibly utilizing our social media and videos because we've gotten tremendous hits on all accounts, you know, Facebook, but Instagram especially and YouTube, so I didn't know if that was still potentially in the works. And then the only other comment that's ironically come up is, I've talked to other people in general about redistricting, is people assuming that they have the input of like, oh, I want to make sure that my community moves to this particular council district or something. So I don't think it's super major, but maybe in, you know, any of the educational pieces, understanding that, you know, the inputs on the map itself and the boundaries themselves, not just picking and choosing where they want to move to. But I have heard that a couple of times recently, so.
Yes, so noted. We will make it very clear that 113,000 individuals do not have the ability to decide where they want to move to and which district and so on and so forth. What they have the ability to do is really provide input on where they think the boundary lines of the existing maps, which we have, how they should be adjusted to go ahead and formulate fairly equal districts. The other piece that you know actually is, so it's important to remember that what we are considering is any changes in the population from 2010 to 2020. It's not necessarily a whole, you know, districting from scratch anymore. We are looking, we are. anymore. We are looking, we already have a district boundary map. We are looking at where the additions of the population has occurred from 2010 to 2020, and probably how those things, how the current map, to the extent possible, needs to be adjusted so that folks can stay in their same districts with their same representatives. While we can no longer consider the existing residential addresses of elected or appointed members, minimizing district changes is something that we can be mindful of.
And I don't remember if it was brought up before, but the Peach Jar system at all the schools, especially now that the schools are back in session, just to help get the word out.
Absolutely. We have actually started using Peach Jar for even our boards and commissions recruitments. And it has proved to be very successful, because we have noted that parents absolutely open up their children's backpacks to look at notices. They will look at that before they look at a mailer from us. So it's been, it's been very fruitful.
Commissioner Tellese, will you?
Just passing, have veterans groups and communities been evaluated in this process? I know in some cities, it's very, very obvious, where people move to an area that are, their group, really put it that way. I don't know if that exists here as a, as a component, but I would like to see it considered.
Absolutely. Thank you for that suggestion. We can absolutely reach out to, that is something, Commissioner Tellese, that hasn't been brought up yet. And we can definitely reach out to VFW. I don't know what information they might have. We can also reach out to, we have some contacts with the VA and understand that if there are, if they're aware of veteran communities that live in the same area, or in pockets of neighborhoods that we can become aware of and let them know about the redistricting process as well.
Go ahead.
Just one other thing. So when you talked about as much as possible doing with the schools, with the school overlay, because our districting right now is, is not, right?
Right.
So maybe expand on that.
Yeah. So remember, school boundaries are very, I mean, they're huge compared to city boundaries, right? So Temecula Unified School District doesn't just necessarily serve proper Temecula boundaries only, right? It serves broader. So school district boundaries are necessarily going to be larger than city boundaries. So, but to the extent possible, we can be mindful of what those boundaries are, so that you don't necessarily have, where there's opportunity for, for coalescing and make, and giving some consistency, that we can go ahead and do that. So that if, if we identify a particular neighborhood, it would be nice if that particular neighborhood was in the same school district boundary too, as opposed to two separate district boundaries, or three separate district boundaries. So we can just be mindful of those kinds of things as we move forward.
I do have a question. In, in the evaluation of things, I'm just curious, is the business and commercial activity in town considered as, as it relates to its impact on a district? You know what I'm getting at? I mean, I'm just, I can see a situation where a heavy concentration like Old Town.
Right.
Would have a significant political awareness and certainly financial capabilities that a residential neighborhood may not have when it comes to electing a council member or something of that nature. I'm just curious, is that taken into account?
So technically, no. However, philosophically and politically, yes. When we first went to districting, there was considerable conversation about, well, you know, should Old Town be in one district, or should the mall, a Promenade Mall, be in one district? And different cities have looked at that differently. So some cities, if there's a centralized commercial area, they'll actually draw the districts out so that every council member has a little piece of that centralized commercial area. On the other hand, there are cities, for example, like Temecula and others, that have done what we've done, which is, you know, at the end of the day, the elected officials need to represent not only their, 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 their district, but Temecula as a whole. And all of the council members have a vested interest in all of the commercial activity in all of the city, irrespective of where it is located. It would also make it very, very difficult for a city like Temecula to try to split up the Promenade Mall or Old Town into five different districts, which are big, you know, ticket items. So you'd probably run up against some interesting district pictures and maps, and that probably wouldn't fly.
Well, thank you. That answers. Any other questions? Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners, for listening to our presentation. And if you come up with anything later on, please feel free to send us an email.
Okay. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. Moving on to the public hearing items, any person may submit written comments to the Planning Commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the Commission's Secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission may file an appeal of the Commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. Agenda item number six is Planning Application Number 210433, a modification application to modify a development plan to alter the westerly facade of the former Sears store to incorporate a new design for the new second floor tenant, Dick's Sporting Goods, located at 40710 Winchester Road. Do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, we do. Yeah. Do we have a, is it, there we go. Sorry about that. All right. So this project is a, as you mentioned, a development plan to modify the westerly facade of the former Sears store and incorporate the new design for the second floor tenant, Dick's Sporting Goods. This project is located in the Promenade Mall at the southwest intersection of the Winchester and Margarita intersection at 40710 Winchester Road. And the building itself is located on the vacant second floor of the former Sears building in the mall. The exterior scope of work includes what you can see in the highlighted tan area below a new entrance and facade improvements. The area highlighted in red depicts the sidewalk for building egress. The area highlighted in blue shows the improvements per American with Disabilities Act, including new pavement markings from the parking lot to the entrance, and also detectable warning pavers, and a revegetated landscaping on the site as well. Here we have an elevation of the existing condition of the Sears second floor building and the proposed here now. The redesign includes the facade change going from the postmodern architecture style to a mercantile design. There will be new prominent brick veneer at the entry, brick veneer at the base and columns of the facade, new tan and brown paint on the building, and then accentuating building pieces throughout the facade, including the green corrugated metal and soffits. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Project PA 210433, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Staff is here, as well as the applicant, should you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. Good report. Just real briefly, it's been sort of our way of operating that we just sort of go down the, the dais for comments. So I don't, we generally just always start on that side and work this way. But I just don't want you to feel like you have to say something right away. And if you think of something later, you can speak up anytime. That's just the way it's been convenient to handle it. So I will continue that, if that is okay with you. And do we have any discussion amongst , for the staff? We'll start with you, Mr. Abell.
So I think we're starting here with questions, because we, before we do the public hearing, like, we open, so if there's any questions of staff, yes.
Yeah, just questions of staff.
I do not have any questions.
I do have a question. So can you go back to the slide of the west? So, so Dick's is going to be on the second floor, correct?
That is correct.
So what's, so what's the bottom going to look like? Like, is it just going to be on top of something else?
Yes. So there's, you know, the way the building is laid out on the site, on the opposite side, so the east facing side, that is where round one is. So on that side, it looks like a two-story building.
Right.
The upper half of that second story will be occupied by Dick's Sporting Goods. Now that we're facing this west side elevation, it's a different topography. It is at grade, essentially, the second floor is at grade here on this side.
Okay.
So is that ground?
Yeah. It's just, yeah.
They built up.
It feels a little weird.
When they, when they did the grading for the site, it's actually, there's a slope there that slopes down to the first floor. And then they graded, you know, basically dirt up to the second floor on this side, and it meets it. So it looks like it's, it's the first floor. But really, it's a two-story building with a berm built up to it, and you enter on the second floor.
And so that's not going to look weird, that we have one side as Dick's and the other side is round one? Question.
That's a good question. And it is something that was considered in the initial submittal. From what we gather, you're on a whole different ground, you're on a different level when you are on the other side of the Dick's Sporting Goods. So on that side, you will not be able to see this elevation on the, the.
But there will be a sign, right? Because I looked on the other, on the east side elevation, there'll be a little Dick's sign, correct?
On the.
That's what I saw.
East side?
Yeah.
There will, from what I gather, there, the main thing you will be able to see is the parapet, which is also, you know, articulated with the same architecture style. Not sure what you're referring to on the.
Just from what I saw from the elevations. So.
And then it's also important to note signage was not a part of this review. There is currently a sign program associated with the mall. So as I, as it shows up here on this slide as well, it's.
This is what she's talking about.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Correct. Yeah. It's, signage is not a part of this review. Ultimately.
You're just labeling that. That's not part of the review.
It's labeled, it's not a part of the review. It would be a sign program amendment to do any different signage than what is currently out there.
Okay.
And ultimately, that would be reviewed against the, the mall's specific plan as well. So currently, the way the sign program reads is you get one sign per tenant, per frontage. I understand your concern with the different facade, you know, views and everything. So here, the frontage is what you're looking at here. The way the code is written, this is the side that gets the sign. And that's, you know, something that we've been in discussions with the applicant as well. And, you know, for the sake of moving forward, we said, we're going to do signage separately. Let's just proceed with the facade change.
Yeah. But the facade is very different from the other side also. Correct? Do you have a slide of the round one at all? Just so that we can see the difference?
I do not. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I know the colors would, because round one is red and black.
Right. Yeah, it's very different.
Picture it. So.
Yeah. So I, that's just kind of a little bit, I know we're just doing questions right now. So that was just, I was trying to visualize that all on one floor, you know? So now I got the visual of the one floor. But, all right. That was my question.
Any questions of staff? Commissioner Tellese? Commissioner Ruiz?
No, actually, thank you, Commissioner Trejo. My question just happened to do with signage. So all signage here is a different process, and that goes through the Promenade Mall general plan?
Yes, it's not a part of the scope of this project. Ultimately, it's something that would be comparing against the existing sign program, which, what, at staff level, we're looking at is cohesiveness and proper integration with the existing signage, and also ensuring that, you know, everybody has an equal opportunity with, with their signage. And essentially here, we're, we're sticking to the code basically on that. And so their, their frontage, their signage is going to be on this west elevation. And it's not a part.
It looks appropriate here. I guess my concern when I first read that was just making sure we're not going to have a giant standalone green rectangle with nothing that ends up in place there where the sign is indicated on the elevation. So.
Yeah, that's also part of what we review, is the proportion of the, of signage relative to the fascia where the sign is placed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers tonight?
We have none.
With that, I will close the, sure. But let me close the public hearing. Keep it open. Okay. We want to hear from the applicant, wish to speak?
If you have any questions, Commissioners, I represent Seritage Growth.
If you can speak in the mic, please.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
Hi. I'm Maria Estrada Nino with Seritage Growth Properties. I've actually been here before to present the round one presentation. So if you have any questions for me, this is.
My name is Brittany Wilson. I am the current store manager of the Dick's Sporting Goods of Marietta right now.
Okay. Make sure you step up a little closer to the microphone. We'll start down here. Any questions to the applicant?
I do not.
Yeah. So I guess, well, especially since you've already been here for round one, right?
Yes.
Round two. Okay. So, yeah, I'm just, I think, I guess, I have to wrap around in my head that this is like two buildings or something, because it's kind of weird, thinking about Dick's, which is so green, right? Like, that is Dick's. And then you turn around, and then you've got red with round one.
It's the turning radius. So like Jaime had explained, it's, when you're coming around the ring road, you're seeing the huge Sears sign. You're not seeing anything relative to round one. So you're not seeing the red and that white and all of that in that area. So when you turn the corner and you're wrapping around the auto center, first thing that appears to you is that beautiful facade that we built out with the dark tones, and I think it was like the bronze apolic panels that we built. So you're looking at a, I want to say, it's like a cohesive mix. And then you've got round one on that side. You don't really see Sears. Originally, when Sears was built out, they had the huge sign on the front. And then they had another on that side of the facade when you come around. So that you could see from the ring road that there is a Sears on the upper level. So I think you'll have a cohesive project here. Dick's facade is unique. It brings that, you know, foot traffic to the mall, you know? So any other questions I can answer for you?
Well, I guess just my concern is that as it wraps around, I mean, can you go back to the Dick's slide, please?
I believe one thing that's not denoted is if you look at the west elevation, you see that gray hierarchy.
Uh huh.
That's a loading dock. That's, so when you're wrapping around, you could kind of barely see a loading dock. So you don't see an actual, let's just say, architectural element, other than that gray tower.
Okay. But I guess what I'm just wondering is if it would be wiser to have, Stuart showed me like the round one slide. I wish, yeah, it would be nice to have that. But somehow, like, that looks like yellow to me. It's hard to tell in a picture. But that looks like yellow, what's on there. And then as you wrap around, what's with round one is more of a, kind of a cream color, is what I'm seeing. So I guess, it feels like if there could be some congruency, that would be it. Where it looks like yellow, instead of yellow, it would be the same color as it's. Where it looks like yellow, instead of yellow, it would be the same color as it's on the other side. Does that make sense? So it doesn't look like, oh my gosh, we have Dix, and oh my gosh, we have round one. I don't know. This is bothering me.
Yeah, it's, like, I know, west elevation, you've got Dix. On the-
Yeah.
On the east side, which are completely, you know, 180 degrees from each other, is, you don't see one building. You think it's two different tenants. So you have different elements. I wish we had a, I have some photos, maybe I can email of the existing facade, so you could see the lower level. I could share with Jaime.
The existing facade that, that will eventually be Dix, is that what you're saying?
No, the existing facade over where we have the proposed restaurant tenant that we had built out and the round one.
Yeah, the one that I was asking about, yeah. Yeah, I mean, do you see what I'm saying? Like, if, if, I'm all about colors. I'm here, I'm here to tell you. So I'm just like, if, that's like yellow and green. I get that it's on the other side, but it doesn't look like anything at the mall either. Do you know what I mean? Like, it is its own thing, so it's going to be like-
It's unique to Dix, yes. Yeah, a customer will not miss, and they'll know where to go to Dix.
I get it, but I, I think part of our job is to look at what's going to look good all the way around. So that, that's just my question here. I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. See?
Okay, and we don't have that available to us tonight.
Is the yellow actually paint two on this chart?
Jaime?
Can you repeat that? I apologize.
Is, is the, what looks like it's yellow on the building, is it actually the color of paint two? The swatch that was down below it?
Yeah, the tan color is what is proposed at this point, yes.
So it's not really a yellow color then?
Yeah, but the point is, I, we either need to look, be able to see something that actually has the colors. It's so hard to tell on these kind of pictures. I don't know. I don't know. I'm struggling with that color and then wrapping around and having all the other colors.
So I'm, I'm asking them to put my screen up real quick. I got a good angle on this on Google Maps, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, what we're talking about, the same thing. So they're, they're trying to pull that up real quick.
Can I ask a question while they're doing that?
Sure, absolutely.
So, looking at the west elevation and the east elevation, there is that wraparound. I mean, I pulled up a different version of it, but that used to be an entrance into Sears. Do we, is there a design or is there something, what, what does that, I guess it'd be the north as it does wrap around the building? What, what's the design plan there?
That actually designed was, we worked on that about four years ago when we were proposing the round one. The city of Temecula required the landlord to do some upgrade to the facade, and that was the elevation the city had recommended. So if this existing view-
Sorry. Let me back here real quick.
As you're wrapping around and you're looking around, you've got that retaining wall that you're not able to see into the loading dock. It actually, you know, keeps that eye away from obviously the inside.
So-
So the, the, the proposed Dix elevation obviously is on this side here.
Correct.
And then it would turn, it would remain the white color here in the loading dock area before it wraps around the other side to round one. Is that correct?
That's what we have as, so this is, this is our understanding of where the paint ends. This is the front of Dix. It comes all the way down. This is like the lower wall that is a screening of the, the trash area. But the paint is only on this facade wall. This wall stays this color. This, this parapet stays that color. All of this stays, this is a future restaurant site here. This is an entrance, it's kind of a decorative entry. So Dix is only on this facade, not necessarily over this way. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
I understand that.
Okay.
My, my-
The other side.
Huh?
You're concerned the-
Yeah, I'm concerned.
The east side.
I mean, look at what that looks like right there, you know? And pictured, just green and even if it's not yellow, whatever that is, like, it, it feels, it doesn't feel congruent. It feels like we just put Dix there. I, I don't, I, I think there's something we need to figure out on how we can make it congruent, whether, whether the, that secondary color is the same that wraps around all the way to kind of tie something in.
Same channel.
Yeah, because otherwise, it doesn't look like anything at the mall. It doesn't, you know what I mean? It's just, I don't know. Some, something has to be congruent, even though they're on two opposite sides of each other, because even with the rest of the mall, it's-
I'm going to speak to staff. Do you understand what the commissioner's concern is? And do you have a way to articulate us out of this?
Well, I'll, I'll rescue Jaime from this. It sounds to me like you don't like the colors. Okay? And that's fair enough, that's fair enough. I would have to turn it over to the applicant a little bit, because I, we need to understand what the corporate wiggle room is here, because every Dix that I've seen is green, and the whole facade is green. I believe the one that we have here in the city to the north is green. So I wanted, need to ask you first, what kind of wiggle room do you have? Oh, it isn't? Okay, that's, which one is that? Ah, okay, very good, okay. Okay, well, there, that answers that. So there is some wiggle room.
Can you actually put that in the record, what Stuart just said? Just, I don't think everybody else had the benefit of hearing.
The, the record is, is that the one in Marietta, Marietta is not solid green, as this one is proposed to be solid green. It has much less green, and it has the, the, the logo is green. That's right, okay.
I understand that. I understand the logo needing to be that. I'm just, my concern is that somehow it's, it just doesn't feel like, oh my gosh, there's Dix, which they might want that as a company, but do we want that? Is how that looks with the whole promenade mall and everything. So I think whatever we can do to make it more congruent with the mall and with around the corner, I, would be important to me.
Is there a color you like better than the yellow that you're, the yellow is the problem, right?
Yeah, I think the, and maybe not as much green is what you were talking about, right, Luke?
Hang on, sorry, hang on.
Can we go back to Jaime's computer? He's going to put the elevation back up.
Yeah, let's, let's slow down and deal with this one at a time. Okay. So this shows dark green background all, all along there. That's what you're intending, correct?
Yes, and vice chairman, across the country, we've, Dix is one of our pronounced tenants at most of our, we own, just for a little history, we own about 254 Sears and Kmart's across the country. And getting tenants to re-tenant these vacant spaces has been difficult. Dix expressed interest here. This is their new, and it's, by new, I mean, this has been, I think, three years their prototype. So it will be difficult to go back to Dix and state, "You've got to change their color of their facade." However, vice chairman, what I may, if I may add, or add a condition, we as Seritage would like to get an approval today with everyone's, you know, consent. I'm willing to say that Seritage will work on the, what is it? The north end facade, so that you get some cohesiveness if it's something regarding the band that needs to be painted. We did that prior with Sears. We painted the whole facade on, well, actually, we painted all around the building. So if you want something a little more cohesive, we could add that as a condition of approval. But I don't believe Dix would be willing to change this prototype that they've had in, for three years, I believe now.
Okay.
I'd like to just add real briefly, I, I think we saw this as it came in as being very intentionally, you know, something different, a different facade, to identify the Dix locations as its specific spot. And I think we see that throughout the mall, really, when we look at Lucille's is different from other portions of the mall. Round one is different, and you guys did get a chance to review and approve the different materials that were used on that facade. Same with Apple. And we can pick out different pieces and parts of the mall that all have their own identity. So that's just another thought.
Okay, so, in a minute, I will get to you, Bob. So chairman, or Commissioner Tulli-Trejo, what about this would you change, and what would you change it to if you could?
Well, I think part of the, I, I understand what you're saying. I do, and, and we want Dix. I'm not saying we don't want Dix. That's not part of this at all. I think it would definitely be a great addition to the mall. From what it looks like here, and that's what's hard, we don't have real materials, we can't really tell for sure. It looks yellow if it's not, and if it's that color down at the bottom on the left, the tan, if that's truly the color, that would be much better. And then, so that, that was the color that I'm suggesting would be congruent, like somehow carrying that color around so that it doesn't feel like we just planted Dix there. Does that make sense?
Yes, and Jaime, if we recall, we did a wrap around the facade where the trash enclosures are and around that other elevation. We're willing to look at it as the ownership to collaborate and come up with a color that's more cohesive to wrap that area.
So can I get clarification? The question was, is the color that tan color?
Yes, it is.
So it is, not the yellow that's shown, and it's the tan? Okay.
Does that satisfy your concerns? They're willing to work-
It helps.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Hagel.
I was just going to make that suggestion, that, that if that color wraps around that area, then you've got cohesive, and you've got a very cohesive, it's, it's, you, it seems like it's part of the same building then, and it's a, it's a much smoother transition to your, to your eyes.
Is there any other way of having less green?
I understand. Unfortunately-
No?
No.
Not really?
Vice chairman, I apologize.
Okay, so the greens there, the other color they're willing to work with, staff.
Okay, all right.
We have to trust that that's going to be acceptable.
Okay.
Which I think we can, and Commissioner Ruiz, I will get you. Am I, am I going down the right track here? Okay, so-
I will also add essentially that what we refer to when it comes to the design is essentially the design guidelines of a specific plan, and it actually encourages unique, independent, and even quote thematic, architectural facades. And that's the guidelines that we are utilizing when we're moving forward and include in the review of these applications.
But with the specific plan, then they still have to, the requirements for the signs in the specific plan still have to meet your approval, meaning staff, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Ruiz, did you have anything?
Thank you, yeah. No, I just wanted to offer up for Vice Chair Tulli-Trejo here as well. I was able to pull up on my Google Earth kind of what we were pulling up over here, and the entrance to the promenade, the actual main archway over there, does seem to look similar to the tannish, yellowish color that, that they're proposing over here. And immediately to the right is Starbucks with a big green awning, and Starbucks is obviously in green. So I, I know it is difficult, I'm trying to get everything pictured as well, but when I took a look at this other, I don't know how to get this on, on the screen here, but it, it, it did make me feel a little bit better about that blending in, you know, still with the uniqueness of, of the building itself, but knowing that just, just on the other side, there is this cream, tannish color that's the main, the main building there. And there is, in addition, obviously, to the, to the landscaping, but that Starbucks does actually pull in a little bit of green that might help it be a little more appeasing.
Yeah, it's a different color of green, but yes. Anyway, I, I'm okay with if that's the tan color, and that's going to be something that can be congruent, I think that helps me a lot, as long as it's not that yellow and boom.
Okay, so we're going to trust that they'll work with staff and comply with this, the requirements as called out in the specific plan, and hopefully the color is more to the liking of, of a commission up here. And, and I think we can move on from there, is that right? Do we have any more questions of the applicant from commissioners?
Okay.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing and entertain discussion and, and a possible motion. We'll start down on the left with Commissioner Hagel.
Just if I could add real quick for clarification, there were no public comments or requests to speak for the evening.
I have nothing to add after. I think we've expressed everything.
Commissioner Tullisio?
Trying to think of the word that encompasses-
Speak into your mic, please.
Go ahead.
The word that encompasses the, the concept of them wanting a certain look wherever they go, and I can't remember the word, but what I'm saying is this may be very important to the, to the store's identity. Everywhere they go and everywhere he goes, you might have that color green, and it may be the one they want forever, because that's what people identify with, so.
And we ran into this before with the Starbucks not wanting us-
We've turned down more buildings for that reason than, than you'd think.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Clow. Any discussion?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I will move, move the item with the stipulation that the tan color be wrapped around, I think was it the north end?
Okay.
Is that agreeable to you?
Approval with the condition for ownership to work with planning. So we would like to move forward with building the Dix. That's what I'm looking for. So hence, yes, with the condition that we'll work with planning on a cohesive color that'll wrap around.
Great, thank you.
I need to clarify a little something there. When you say wraparound, how far are you expecting the wraparound to go? Because that wall goes all the way down to round one. So would it be wraparound to the existing parapet as a, as the dividing line? Or what were, what were your thoughts on that?
That it's congruent with round one, like it's, it's a, I mean, like I said, I can't see round one right now, but that it's, at least blends or something. Doesn't have to be the exact same color, but somehow congruent as, as the building wraps
Well, we, we've got, we've already got the guidelines in the specific plan to help guide them and give us direction. So I think with the input that we've given them, they can probably find somewhere in there that works.
Yeah, that's fine. He was just asking for clarification, so.
But can, I'm sorry, but can I, my understanding was that what was proposed was stopping only on the west elevation, that there was not going to be anything wrapped around.
That's why I was asking, because what we have as an application and what we've been working off of is the colored, whatever color is chosen, nothing wraps around, it's only on the western facade.
And, and so that north end remains as is and-
It remains as is.
Restaurant or whatever over there.
That's what we have as an application, that's what, that's what we've been working off of.
I think you just made the motion though, right? Didn't you make the-
Yeah.
-motion for that wraparound? With that condition?
Are we talking about the same area? We are talking about the same area?
Let's, let's, let's define it by elevation, okay? The west elevation is strictly along the road there. The wraparound is what you're talking about is actually the-
North.
North, is that correct? And that's the, the-
Well, because right now, isn't that the same color as the Sears building?
It is.
Okay, so that's my point. Like, that is the congruence, right?
Well, the western facade is going to have different colors, because it's-
Right.
Dix Sporting Goods going in there, and there's going to be different colors. That's just on the west facade.
I understand.
The north facade is not proposed to be changed at all. It's supposed to be, it's proposed to be left alone, which is the same color as you wrap around to the east-
Okay.
-as round one.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so do you want to amend your motion then?
What?
Just to make sure that, to make sure that that color is the tan that they're working with, it's not the yellow.
Okay.
That's the condition.
Agreed.
I'll amend to that.
Can you read the motion to us?
Sure, so the motion is to approve staff's recommendation to approve the project and and with the stipulation that the color that's depicted as yellow is actually a tan color, which is shown like on the smaller slide.
Great, there's your motion. Do we have a second on it?
A second.
It's been seconded, so we'll have a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that's a five to zero vote, unanimous. Thank you, congratulations. All right. Too many papers up here.
Commissioner reports next.
Commissioner reports, okay. Do we have any commissioner reports? Mr. Hegel, you're new, so you probably don't have a lot, but whatever.
No, I can tell you more about what's going on in Public Traffic Safety Commission, if you're interested.
Not tonight.
Yeah, so, tomorrow they will be, will be restriping Paba Road, so stay off of it.
Yeah, so, I wanted to welcome the new commissioners tonight, Adam and Bob. It's great to have you here and great to have you with some prior experience. That'll be great to be able to jump in. I also wanted to congratulate our new deputy city manager. That's the first time we've seen that on the agenda, so that's pretty fun. And we're proud to have you as one of our own and know that you will represent well and know that you are well-deserving in that position. And that's all I have.
Any report, Commissioner Telleseal?
Only that it's pretty crowded up here in a good way.
Just thanks again for, for the welcome, both from fellow commissioners and staff, and congratulations to Chair and Vice Chair on your new role as well.
Thank you very much. I have no report. We do have subcommittee reports. There were two subcommittee meetings today, which Commissioner Turley Trejo and myself are a part of. We will split the, the items and, and report briefly on what happened. You can go first.
Okay, so, we had a short-term rental subcommittee meeting today, and just informing us of maybe some projects down the road and some things that might be happening down the road. Nothing formal yet, and so, but it was good to meet, and good to meet in person in like a meeting room, so that was really fun.
And the other subcommittee has to do with the housing element of the general plan. There's some real strict guideline, timelines on it. They had the public hearing on the draft plan yet last night, I believe.
It was a workshop, a public workshop.
Workshop, on the draft, the draft housing element plan, and there'll be a 30-day comment period for people to weigh in on it. That will end on, I believe it's the 13th?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Fifteenth is our next meeting.
Okay. Anyhow, the, the date of our mid Sept, I'm getting all the months confused, our mid-September meeting, I believe, will be the closing date for the comments on the draft element. And so, we will be receiving that that night, and it'll be just right after the comment period closes. And they will be presenting the housing, housing element with all its components to us that night, and it has to go before, or it's scheduled to go before the council, assuming that we've dealt with it adequately the next, the next month, shortly thereafter. So, that's, it will, we'll certainly see more about that when we get briefed on it, on the item, but.
One thing I wanted to add, actually, just to my commissioner report, is I am representing the Planning Commission on the Quality Life Master Plan, so we have our first meeting next week. So, I wanted to let everybody know that. They, they had a workshop for it with the city council a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. And so, I will be bringing reports back to the commission on that.
Great, thank you. And did we have any other subcommittees that I'm not aware of that met? There's not anybody left. We're going to have to probably look at that, right, Luke? As far as updating our committee assignments?
It's on the next agenda.
Okay, great. All right, very good. Community Development Director report. And I concur with Commissioner Turley Trejo's comments. Congratulations on your new position.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you. It's my turn?
Your turn. Let me take that back now.
Well, I have to say that was one of the more robust conversations we've had on a facade in a long time, so, good to know that we're going to be a, you know, willing to be as prepared as possible from going forward. No, that was good. I was going to talk about the Quality Life Master Plan, Blue Ribbon Committee meeting next week, but Commissioner Turley Trejo let you know about that. There will be a series of meetings. Next week is really kind of the ground rules kickoff, and then we'll be succeeding meetings. We'll be jumping into kind of the beaten potatoes of, of the Quality Life Master Plan. So, stay tuned for that. And then the last thing, I don't know if anybody parked downstairs tonight, but if you did, or if you do in the future, one tip, the gate will be shut, and when you go up to meet it, it will go up, and when you go underneath, it'll start to come back down. Don't worry. It has a sensor. It will go back up. And if you, if you don't, if you don't know that, you'll be scared, and you'll stay there all night long. So, don't worry, it won't shut on your car. That's it.
Get that in writing. Well, that's a valuable report. Thank you. Ron?
Okay, so.
Public Works.
Thank you. For Public Works, as Commissioner Hegel mentioned, Paba will be restriped tomorrow, and then shortly thereafter Butterfield. Both those projects, as far as the rehab of those, went very well. We were very happy with the contractor, and they went fast. So, that was very good. And we're going to be starting our residential slurry seal project now throughout the city. And then also, we have at our upcoming city council on the agenda is going to be awarding a contract for the fiber connect of our traffic signals. And so, I know Commissioner Hegel's familiar with that one, and we did receive a grant that we are starting, and we do have a contractor in place. We're going through that process right now, and it's going to interconnect approximately 40-something signals, you know, with fiber optic. So, that'd be great. And then lastly, our director, Pat Thomas, wanted to make sure that Commissioner Turley Trejo knew that at the upcoming council agenda, there's going to be an item for pickleball courts at Wolf Creek Park. So, he wanted to make sure that I mentioned that for her. And that's it for this evening from Public Works, unless you have any questions.
Any questions at Public Works? With that, then I think we've reached an adjournment for the night, so we will.
So, move.
Adjourn with a move in a second from?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Telleseal?
Good job, Gary, tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we will stand adjourned until our next meeting on September 1 at 6 o'clock here in City Council chambers.
Good job.
Good job, Gary.
Thank you for your attendance.